Hello and good afternoon. Welcome to an extremely special episode of Hard Lens Media. We have a very jam-packed episode today and we are starting off with one of our special guests who is joining us here in the studio, Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chui Garcia, who is also an Our Revolution Illinois endorsed candidate for the 4th Illinois Congressional District. Sir, thank you very much for joining Hard Lens Media.
It's great to be in your studios. Very colorful, very inspirational and good ambiance.
Well, we try our very best, sir, but we're really glad to have you here. So, I think initially, let's get this started. When Congressman Gutierrez stepped down sometime earlier, a few months ago, in regards to being a congressman for the United States Congress, a lot of people were taken aback that he was, you know, leaving that office. So, for our viewers, what were the initial challenges to get your campaign to where it is at right now? And going forward, what do you want to say to the people who thought you might be a potential candidate for the mayoral run in 2019? Because last time, you were a very powerful opponent against Mayor Rahm Emanuel.
Well, one, I seriously looked at contending in a rematch in 2019 for very obvious reasons that the city has serious challenges facing it. Inequality, the concentration of poverty in many areas of the city, particularly the west and the south side, a public school system that continues to be underfunded and significantly challenged, a lot of privatization in the system has occurred. And then, of course, the violence in the city that continues to plague Chicago, give us a bad reputation and taking a tremendous human toll. It's coupled in the areas of the greatest concentration of poverty. In terms of entering the race for Congress, it was not an easy decision on the first count. It was difficult to abandon the idea that I would not be in the 2019 contest, though I'm hopeful and optimistic that the prospects for change in Chicago continue, both in executive offices, like the mayor's office and the other citywide, and in the city council. I think there's tremendous potential for a change in electing more progressives, people who reflect forward-thinking and who want to do away with inequality in Chicago. I also, when the congressman first told me that he was thinking about retirement, I sort of laughed it off, didn't think it was serious. The conversations continued and it was only till close to the day that we both decided that it was something that I was interested in pursuing, given the great urgency in Congress to have a voice like mine, someone who's lived the immigrant experience, someone who can fight and push back on Donald Trump, and someone who can also be an important voice and a leading member of the Progressive Caucus with relationships in other caucuses in the Congress, like the Hispanic Caucus and the Black Caucus in Congress. I thought that it made a lot of sense because there is a great urgency to have, I believe, a voice like mine representing the 4th District, embracing of the diversity in the 4th District, but of course, very mindful that immigration reform has to continue to be a great priority, that we need to stimulate the economy to create a fairer economy for all, including living wages. So, an infrastructure bill is something that I want to see happen, but a real one, not the proposal that Donald Trump has given us, which essentially gives more profits to those who already are doing quite well in society. And finally, I'm very concerned about the future of access to higher education and career paths and workforce training. So, the idea that making higher education accessible and affordable, great priorities for me. And of course, being that I am a Bernieocrat, I very much favor the move to improve Obamacare and to move it toward universal healthcare, a Medicare-for-all system with a single payer.
Now, of course, let's talk about Berniecrats, Our Revolution, people who want to reform the DNC. Currently, a lot of people, especially independents and progressives, are really critical of current Democratic leadership. For example, with the government shutdown, many of the corporate Democrats did not really go to bat for the DACA recipients. And even though DACA recipients have a huge approval rating, when you have all Silicon Valley write to Congress saying, "Do not deport these people, we need them here," it's quite clear that the DNC, at least this current DNC in the Congress, is tone deaf. So, essentially, let's say you are in the Congress right now and there is another potential government shutdown, or there is Republicans who are refusing to work any kind of deal out with the Democrats. Are you going to fall in line with the DNC establishment? Will you fight back? Will you also have to deal with people like Nancy Pelosi? What will you do?
If you look at my history in Chicago and in Chicago politics, I probably have been fighting machine forces in Chicago longer than anyone else from a working-class base in the city and have succeeded and held the ground, if I may, over a period of over almost 35 years now. That will be my posture in Washington. However, what I think will be different is, I think we've got an excellent shot at winning a majority in the House of Representatives for Democrats. I think I can help move the needle with other members of Congress who perhaps have not had as much fortitude to fight on principle, and I think I can be a very positive force. All the while, focusing on creating some additional middle space in the middle for more bipartisanship and collaboration. I have a history of having done that in Springfield as a state senator, where I was able to pass legislation when Democrats were in the minority during the early 90s. So, I've done that before. I want to be that type of voice in Congress. And of course, one of my great priorities in Congress will be to overturn Citizens United and to introduce a public-funded system of elections, as I have tried to do in Cook County with the ordinance that I introduced, to move us away from the influence of big money and corporate money in politics, to a small donor system that levels the playing field, that allows anyone to run for office.
Now, recently Senator Bernie Sanders endorsed you. You had a huge rally at the Apollo 2000 Theater. And of course, Our Revolution Illinois has also endorsed you as well. So, pretty much, you have a lot of support from a lot of progressives and independent groups. But outside of your race, what have you seen in regards to money in politics and how Citizens United has not only affected federal elections, but state elections as well?
Look, it's no secret that the influence of big money in politics and corporate interests are turning people off. People are not voting at the levels of participation that we need to have an engaged citizenry. That will only happen when we remove the influence of the Koch Brothers, of corporate interests, both in Washington DC, in state capitals, and even in city councils, only as we move people to grassroots action and create systems for small donor systems to be able to, again, level the playing field, prevent candidates and elected officials from spending so much time on fundraising, having to amass huge amounts of dollars to be able to compete, either to run for office or to keep a seat that they have and try to campaign and use incumbency to their advantage. We should level the playing field, relieve incumbents and challengers of the burden of having to raise big money. If you raise a certain amount of money from small donors in your district, you can run, you can compete, and what you will get is better accountable government that is loyal to the voters of those districts and to the small donors of those districts, thus freeing everybody from the burden of constantly engaging and wasting time and resources on just fundraising. That's what corrupts politics and that's what corrupts government.
Now, let's look at the Democrats as a whole, because in 2016, they lost to Donald Trump and in turn, it allowed many people to wonder what their message is. So, with this current Democratic Party, at least looking at the ones that are still in office, what is the message that they failed to reach out to working-class families who are struggling? You have people working two or three jobs, if they have an accident or they have to pay a medical bill one bad day and they lose their home, their house, their job. What's the message that working-class families need to hear from the Democratic Party?
I think the Democratic Party has to represent the fight for greater prosperity in the American economy. We also have to stand up against corruption in politics and the influence of big money. What does this mean? This means ensuring that government, the federal government especially, provides the essential things in life for all Americans, and that is a living wage, so that people can make ends meet. That will stimulate the economy to have more shared prosperity. You need to have a real education system that doesn't rely, as it does in Illinois, on a regressive system of property taxes to fund our schools. You need good infrastructure, good roads and good transportation, public transit in particular, to move people from where they live to where the jobs are, as we figure out to how more intelligently distribute those jobs, so people aren't spending two or three or four hours traveling from their home to their jobs, wasting time, being denied the opportunity to be with their families. We've got to be smarter. Third, we need a system of care for everyone in terms of healthcare coverage, and that is insurance, medical insurance. The only way that you'll have more prosperity in America is if we move toward a Medicare-for-all system, a single-payer system, that all industrialized countries in the world have, but we don't. I think that the American people today understand this more clearly than ever before. I think there is a great opportunity in the horizon at hand that will give us an opportunity to, in Congress, over the next four to six years, make transformative changes that will move us away from this inequality, the concentration of wealth in fewer and fewer hands, and ensuring that there is greater domestic prosperity on the one hand, and begin a new period of greater peace and stability in the world, so that we're not having to fight multiple wars that were started on a premise that there was a threat, where there wasn't a threat. Part of the reason we have such a huge budget deficit and a huge debt is because of the wars that were started by previous presidents, that we today are spending huge amounts in terms of the defense budget, because those wars were initiated without justification and they've turned out to be a huge cost. Coupled with the Great Recession of 2008, 2009, we have not recovered. That's why the American people are hurting, and that's why Donald Trump was able to essentially hijack the message of Bernie Sanders and talk to what people wanted to hear in terms of their economic insecurity. He's, of course, betrayed the promises that he made to bring greater prosperity and more equality to the American people, and that's why we have an opportunity to step forward, lay out a clear agenda that will surely bring greater prosperity for people and give them a better chance to raise their families across the land.
Now, I want to do a quick follow-up, especially in regards to single-payer healthcare, universal healthcare. Why has there been so much resistance, at least from elected officials, to really embrace this, you know, policy, whereas we look at other developed nations like Germany, Switzerland, they all have, or Canada, they all have single-payer healthcare in one way or shape of another. Why has it been resisted so much here in the United States?
Because very wealthy interests in our society, for a period of 40 years, have been messaging that we have the most advanced healthcare system in the world, that the quality of care is better than any other countries. What they fail to tell you is that people increasingly have lost access to that care, that the only people that can have that care, for the most part, are those who have the right insurance policies that have become very difficult for working people to attain, and that's what they point to. And those things are true, we're very advanced, but we don't utilize our system correctly and we don't allow it to benefit all of the people in society. So, one, they have created a framework in which they argue that we are the best. The problem is that not everyone has access to the best. There's still too much influence from corporate America, from Big Pharma, and from the industries that play a leading role in organizing the health system in America. So, they have succeeded in getting Americans to think that if we change our healthcare system, that somehow it will lead to rationing, that it will leave people without access to healthcare, that there'll be some kind of a Soviet economy that won't work and that will put everyone at risk. That is false. If you simply look at the system in Canada, if you look at the systems across Europe and all over the industrialized world, they have pretty good access to healthcare. You don't hear about people from Canada crossing the border to come to look for pharmaceuticals in our country or for medical procedures. They provide for their country and their people pretty well, and that's why, on the contrary, so many Americans have been going to Canada to acquire medicines, to have medical procedures, because they have a health system that is more equitable and that provides the most basic things in life for everyone in their country.
So, I want to add, this is a specific instance. So, you had about a year ago Cory Booker was one of the Democrats, again, that we're talking about, that had been blocking this kind of legislation, specifically when he wanted to block our importation of drugs, even though many of those drugs remain in the US. What was your take on that situation when that happened and how do you feel about the current Democrats that are, again, the current, the current way the Democratic Party federally is configured, that something like that would happen?
I have no doubt that we are at an important turning point in American history, where people recognize that the concentration of wealth is producing many ills in our society, especially inequality, our inability to provide basic healthcare for everyone. I think that the American public is very interested in looking at the proposal that Bernie Sanders in the Senate and several members in the House have been advancing. I think there is a greater openness to that. People recognize the benefits of Obamacare, even though we don't have the public option because that was negotiated out of the deal. I think people are very open to that, as they are to removing the influence of Big Pharma as part of our health industry and the undue influence that they have because of their presence through lobbyists in state capitals as well as in Washington DC. So, they're open to breaking up the monopoly that exists, the concentration of wealth, and ready to move, to remove the influence of corporations and big profits over the interest of average Americans wanting the basic healthcare that they deserve and that they can have, simply if we move forward with a significant revolution in the politics of our country by removing the big influence of money in both Washington and in state capitals.
Now, I want to return back to Illinois, because people who live here, we know the long, sad history of, you know, corruption, as well as most famously, the Democratic machine. And currently, Cook County Assessor Joseph Barrios, as well as Speaker of the House, Michael Madigan, are both in the newspapers. People are seeing a crack in the machine. What are your initial thoughts on, at least this local politics is seeing, these two individuals being called out by grassroots activists and progressives, calling them for a step down and to remove themselves from office? What are your thoughts on at least these two individuals?
I think Cook County and the state of Illinois are on the cusp of significant change in as far as who the Democratic Party leaders of the future will be. The fact that in Cook County, you have the Assessor also leading the Democratic Party as chairman and presiding over a system that is unfair, that is broken, that has a very regressive impact, particularly on Latino and African-American communities, that has been described as a perfect example of institutional racism, because it creates a reverse Robin Hood effect as it relates to our property tax system. It gives the wealthier areas of the county an ability, a lower property tax assessments, both in residential as well as in commercial properties. And when those interests are able to hire lawyers who do property tax appeals and hire firms that specialize in that, who are wired into the Democratic Party leadership, it really exposes the corruption that has existed in the system for such a long time. I think that as we expose the flaws in the property tax system in Cook County, it's raised a greater awareness about the unfairness of relying on property taxes to fund things like education at the statewide level. People want change, and now people are thinking about the pluses of moving away from the over-reliance on property taxes, especially given how crooked that system has been in Cook County, and moving us toward a progressive tax system that relies on people's ability to contribute, meaning that those who earn a higher income, and of course, I'm talking about a progressive income tax in Illinois, are being able to contribute more than the person who is struggling to make ends meet through his or her job in the economy. So, I think that this is a transformative moment in Cook County. I think it will further the debate about why Illinois needs to move away from property taxes and toward a more progressive and fair tax system. It's impacted the debate in the gubernatorial election. So, I think we're living a very important moment where changes in Cook County will have a positive impact across the state of Illinois and usher in new leaders in the Democratic Party.
Now, let's return back to President Trump, which, of course, him and his policies towards people of color, working-class families, and women in particular, are regressive. And we've seen firsthand with the Women's March, women are starting to get actively involved more in politics, but yet this administration continues to have harsh policies towards women. So, what are your policies to protect women's rights here in the United States, as well as to ensure that they have a voice to play in not only politics, but in all sorts of business here in the United States?
The misogyny and the pronouncements and the unprecedented level of disrespect from this administration, from the President and his administration toward women, I think is raising a great level of awareness in our country. It is exposing the dominance in our society by males in all aspects of society, from the workplace and the experiences that women endure day in and day out with sexual harassment. The inequity in pay. Women don't earn what men earn, they earn less across the board. They don't have positions of power, either as the heads of enterprises or corporations or companies, managers or supervisors, and women are fed up with this. The pronouncements of the President have helped to galvanize and mobilize women. Women want a voice in everything in our society, whether it is politics, whether it's the economy, whether it's the workplace and the role of women struggling for equality. The Women's March, the learning around the sexual harassment instances in different industries across our country and in the world, has mobilized women like never before. I think women are going to be elected to office at the local level, at the state level, and at the national level. It is causing, I think, a real search in our society to get at the roots of male chauvinism and machismo, the dominance that males have had in our society, and really forcing all of us to rethink how we think about women, how we engage with women, how we treat girls, our daughters, our neighbors, in all settings in society. And I think this will add to the transformative period that we have entered as a society. So, it's the contradictions in government, it is the revelation of exploitation of women that is really forcing a national discussion and a reflection, and I think, leading us all to seriously rethink how we, as a society, will move forward in a more equitable and respectful manner as it relates to women. I think if there's one thing that we've learned from the revelations of the past several months, is that when women come forth and complain of sexual harassment, they need to be heard, they need to be taken seriously, their allegations need to be investigated and expeditiously, and there need to be consequences. In politics and in government, those consequences cannot exclude anyone. Party leaders, leaders in government, we've got to send a message that we are a society that believes in equality and respect, and that we will not turn back the clock and we will embrace women and ensure that they have an opportunity to participate as equals in everything that is our society.
Chicago, being a major metropolitan city, suffers from gentrification, but this is, this is just one isolated incident, it's happening in all other major metropolitan cities here in the United States. This system, is it to you a form of racism? And why is it yet to get the media attention? And what could be introduced in Congress to protect working-class families from being displaced due to the ever-growing reach of gentrification?
I think the gentrification and the process of gentrification that we are experiencing in Chicago has an economic dimension, and it's coupled with a racial dimension. Communities that at one time had populations of people of color, lower-income, working-class are being displaced because cities are becoming more exclusive, less affordable for families. I think this is driven by inequality in our society, by the concentration of wealth, and by the fact that we have not developed policies in cities or metropolitan areas, for that matter, that seek to create truly diverse communities. Communities that are economically diverse, that have people with different incomes living in them, that are not racially and ethnically diverse, and that are not friendly to families and working-class families. We need more multifamily housing desperately in Chicago. We have sat on resources, a great example of this is the Chicago Housing Authority, which at one time was sitting on almost a half billion dollars in funding, when there is a shortage of funding for housing across the city of Chicago. So, we need to develop policies that will bring us more equitable development and that will end the patterns of segregation. The Metropolitan Planning Council in Chicago has issued a report, it is an analysis of what has happened in our society over several decades. The levels of racial, ethnic segregation continue to haunt Chicago, they haunt other cities, but it makes the Chicagoland region one of the most segregated in the country. There is a cost to continuing to move this way as a region and as a society. It is bad for us that, you know, 60 years after Brown versus Board of Education, we still have schools and neighborhoods that are racially segregated. That is a bad reflection of us as a society and the lack of equity that we have failed to achieve, to create, again, opportunity and prosperity for more people.
This is kind of a more, a different, on a different, different scale. So, you've been doing this, like I said, for a very long time. You've seen the organizations as they've grown, what makes them work? I'm curious to see how you see the, in the real growth of social media, the internet, and how you see that that has reshaped moments and made moments like these possible, where I would say personally, I don't think that the stuff that's happening right now could be possible without social media or the internet. What's your take?
Without a doubt. First, I must confess that I am not that technologically adept, but I have many conversations with people who are, and I see the interaction that goes on in social media. I see young people and how they communicate. The vast complexity of the technological revolution in communications is having a big impact on everything that has occurred, especially in the last five years alone. If we think about how the country has changed in terms, for example, of gender equality of the LGBTQ community, the current debate around weapons that are easy accessible, the automatic assault weapons, and the role of young people in Florida, for example, given the latest massacre that occurred in South Florida, in that school, the impact that social media had on the presidential campaign in 2016, the success that... that social media had on the presidential campaign in 2016, the success that Barack Obama had in his 2008 campaign and the 2012 campaign, the utilization of those means of communication by Bernie Sanders, and how the Me Too moment that we are living have all been driven in part by the ability to transmit information instantaneously and raising the voice of people who before might have been isolated and not able to come forward and tell their impactful stories.
Out of the legislation that came out from these special sessions held in Springfield last year that have centered around education reform, there was finally the compromise for an evidence-based funding. CPS was one of the largest factions of that. But yet, we're still seeing schools shutting down, or at least on the table to shut down, primarily like before, schools in Inglewood. And there was massive community backlash, and now they're trying to, like slowly, over the next couple of years, have the students transferred to other areas. How can you fight for students that are seeing their communities and their schools closing down, especially when just a few years ago, we saw Rahm Emanuel, under him, about 50-some schools closing down, and they're usually in the west and south side communities? So how will you fight for these children that deserve the right to education?
Well, the closing of almost 50 schools, almost five years ago, in Chicago Public Schools, I think really raised the awareness and the ire of communities that are most affected. These are some of the poor communities in Chicago, most of them African-American, some areas that were Latino schools. And while this was happening, we continued with the drive to continue to open charter schools. A hundred and thirty-plus charters have opened over a, I think, 10, 12-year period in Chicago. People feel like there are other interests, other than education interests, that are driving this agenda that they see as being a privatizing force of public education in Illinois. Many people have reservations, for example, about the system that was set up to provide scholarships for students in private schools that winds up giving corporate interests, you know, an opportunity to continue to play an increasing role in public education and moving it more toward a privatized system. There's great concern about this, and people have been informed by developments in places like New Orleans where you basically eliminated the public school system and replaced it with a system of charter schools. And I think what bothers people the most and what raises the greatest concern is that these charters are not proving to be superior to the public and the neighborhood schools that we have in most communities across Chicago. So you're replacing one public system with a privatized system, but you're not showing that there is necessarily much improvement. Most charters do not, cannot demonstrate a compelling case that they perform better, even though they have the ability to be selective or to cherry pick students. They draw the better students from some of the neighboring, neighborhood schools, and it is really creating, I think, lots of consternation in communities where CPS leaders and bureaucrats want to continue to close more schools while opening up charter schools. And that's been the experience on the west side, in particular, in the North Longdale Community, and now where that is happening is on Chicago's south side. So there's good reason for people to have many questions about it, and I'm glad to see the pushback and the resistance on the part of people in the Inglewood community asking, well, what is the future of our school system if we're closing all of these schools down? And then we have to factor in, what is the most immediate concern that students and parents have, and that is safety, the ability to travel to and from school safely, and who's going to guarantee that? In addition to, the, the bigger question that people are asking, and that is, is this a plan that is about removing poor people from the areas that have become more prime for real estate development in Chicago? And if so, what's the future of poor people and working people and their ability to live close to Chicago's downtown area, which is a big job engine and where all of our cultural amenities tend to be concentrated? So these are all questions that I think communities are processing. All of it is coming back to ask the question about whether there might be afoot a plan to re-engineer Chicago's population.
And a final question, and again, we are so grateful to have you here on our show. For our viewing audience, can you please tell them where they can learn more about your campaign, where they can find you on social media? Because as we all know, March 20th, the primaries are coming close, and they want to know more about the candidates, so where can they find?
Absolutely. So again, I'm Cook County Commissioner Chuy Garcia, candidate for Congress in the fourth congressional district. If folks want to learn more about our campaign and our positions, they can look up chuygarciaforcongress.com. They can become engaged, they can become informed, and if they want to learn more about politics and roll up their sleeves and get exposed to it, they can also volunteer.
All right, that's a great note to end it on. Thank you so much for joining Harland's Media. We're once again glad to have Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chuy Garcia. He is running for the fourth Illinois congressional district. Sir, thank you so much for joining.
Thank you so much, and muy buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, so now we're going to transfer to our second guest. I know this format's very unusual for all our longtime listeners, they're used to having us do some breaking news right now, talking some stories, but today is a very special day where we are front-loading our guests, and we are very excited to do so. You guys are still awake. So right now, we are setting up for our next guest, sitting down right now. Hey, can you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Scott Frankel. I'm running for circuit court judge in the 11th sub-circuit.
Well, it's really nice for you to come in our studio. You're actually the first, I think, judicial candidate that we've actually had on the show. Can you just give us a little background on yourself? I know you grew up in Oak Park. Actually, for full disclosure, I knew you when I was much younger, we met a few times here and there, but give us your backstory.
Sure. I actually didn't grow up in Oak Park, but I've lived in Oak Park for 20 years, where I raised my two kids through the public schools. I'm a lawyer, I've been practicing law for 30 years, primarily doing criminal defense. I started my legal career at Ohio State Law School, where I was editor-in-chief of the Law Journal. After law school, I clerked for a federal judge. After the clerkship, I joined a law firm, a large corporate law firm, Mayor Brown and Platt. And then I decided I was going to make a career shift and change my professional path, and I joined the Cook County Public Defender's Office. After spending some time in the Public Defender's Office, I went into private practice where I represent individuals in criminal cases and also in civil rights cases. I do that in federal and state court, both appointed and retained. I've had all kinds of cases, including death penalty cases at federal and state court. I'm certified by the Illinois Supreme Court to be lead counsel in death penalty cases. Thankfully, the Illinois Supreme Court eliminated, or the Illinois state, the Illinois legislature repealed the death penalty in Illinois, but the federal government still has an active death penalty, and they need lawyers who are qualified and competent to represent people and defend them in those kinds of cases. As far as Oak Park goes, our family has really loved Oak Park. It is a, as you know, an open, welcoming, and diverse community, and I know that my kids are better people for having been raised there, and I know I'm a better person for having lived there for the, for the past 20 years. So that's a little bit about me.
All right, so of course, you're running for the 11th sub-circuit of Cook County, and it's important to note that Harland's Media, we've covered a few events, especially at some courts in Cook County in regards to people challenging bail bonds and making sure that the system is at least feasible for, for at least, you know, people from low-income backgrounds to at least get a fair trial and at the same time not get arrested or put into jail due to the fact that they can't pay off their bail bond. So essentially, what are your initial thoughts as judge on this initial impact and these reforms that people want in regards to having a fair system to represent them?
Sure. I've spent, as I said, 30 years fighting for individuals in the courtroom, and I understand that every time someone walks into the courtroom, the judge has the power to change that person's life forever. People are always scared and nervous, it doesn't matter if they're charged in a murder case, my clients are nervous and scared, of course, but even with traffic tickets, people are nervous and scared when they walk into the courtroom. As a lawyer, I've always been sensitive to that, and as a judge, I'll always be sensitive to that. As far as reforms that are needed in the judicial system, no question about it, I mean, I've been knocking my head against the wall for clients about certain issues for a long time. The judicial system always needs work to be made fairer, more even-handed, and to have outcomes that the public can respect as legitimate. As a judge, I will work really hard to do the kind of work that people will be glad to see a judge do. As far as a specific issue of bonds and what kinds of reforms I support, I do think that too many people are kept in custody as a result of their inability to pay a bond. I mean, this is a problem, there, there should not be discrimination based on economics on whether you are in custody or out of custody. My experience in federal court tells me that there can be a system that is fair and doesn't require a monetary bond. What the federal court does is it sets up a system where a judge decides if someone should be released or kept in custody. If the judge decides that that person should be released based on the charges and their background and the other variables involved in the case, the judge can set conditions for release. That could include posting property or signing guarantees, having family members come in and co-sign bonds. There are lots of creative ways you can structure a bond system that is fair and also doesn't discriminate economically against individuals who can't afford to pay cash bonds.
Now, we've covered a lot in regards to corruption here in Illinois, Chicago, Cook County as a whole, and of course, without a shadow of a doubt, people always feel that the system doesn't represent them. As you spend some time as a defense lawyer, what reforms are really necessary to protect working-class families? Because not, everyone in this city doesn't have access to a high-paid lawyer to get them out, whereas, you know, if the average working-class family member or somebody who is working two or three jobs is put into this system, it's, it's corrupt and it's outdated. What reforms are really needed to really fix it, especially from your time as a defense lawyer? What have you seen that needs to be fixed?
Well, I think the biggest thing is that we need resources devoted to the system to allow the lawyers to do the job that they're able to do. I think the Cook County, I was a Cook County Public Defender, and I think some of the best lawyers in the county are at the Cook County Public Defender's Office. The lawyers need resources, the lawyers need the same resources that the retained attorneys have. In federal court, where I do a lot of appointed work, the court provides resources, even in appointed cases, for expert witnesses, mitigation witnesses, investigators, things like that. In state court, the Public Defender's Office has resources, but I think needs more resources, can always use more resources, more attorneys, more ability to defend people to the best of, of the lawyer's ability.
So we've, we've heard from other cities that sometimes a defense attorney will only have 12 minutes of time available for a client, and then they have to move on to someone else. What is the workload like along the same lines you're mentioning as a public defender here in Chicago?
I actually don't know what the current caseload is for public defenders in the courtroom, so I couldn't comment on that. But I could say that the fewer cases you have, the more attention you can give to each individual client, and that's simply a resource issue. You need to have more lawyers who have fewer cases in the courtroom. I think there, in, in Cook County, there's a resource issue, there's a shortage of resources across the board, in the state's attorney's office, the public defender's office, and in the judiciary. Part of the problem is that you need, it, it costs money to provide the highest level of defense for people, and I think that's what you have to consider when you're going down the road and trying to make the system fair. I also think you need, you need judges who are open-minded and fair and understand that, that individual, the individuals before them and the lawyers practicing before them need to be addressed, I guess, in a patient and open-minded manner. The courtrooms need to be run in a balanced and fair way. When a client is finished with their case, they need to feel that justice has been done, whether they've won that case or whether they've lost that case. Because if they see that the system has been fair for them and that someone has been fighting for them all along the way, the judges have been open-minded, the judge has been open-minded and has not cut off their lawyer's ability to tell the client's story, and the judge has been fair and patient, those are things that make people feel that the justice, justice system is working for them instead of against them.
We've also seen across the country the mention of cannabis being legalized, at least at the state level. And Illinois is on the frontiers of having it legalized here, potentially perhaps not maybe this year, but perhaps next year. And of course, federal law, thanks to Jeff Sessions, is saying that the federal law will supersede all state laws, especially those states that have legalized cannabis, be it for medical, medicinal use or recreational use. But there are many states that are now standing up and resisting, and there are even judges, most notably in San Francisco, who are releasing current convicts who had been, who've been put in prison due to the fact that they were holding on to bags of marijuana, but now they're letting them go. Essentially, what are your thoughts on cannabis legalization? And should we have it legalized here in our state? And you have two conflicting issues, state legalization here in Illinois, and then you have the federal intervention from Jeff Sessions saying that it shouldn't be legal.
Well, that's a tough question for a judicial candidate to answer, because as a judge, I would be required to apply the law fairly evenly and balanced, no matter what the law is. So my personal feeling about what should happen with marijuana can't affect the kind of judge I'm going to be, because in order to do justice, the judge is required to follow the law, of course. I can tell you that it's clear that even in Illinois, there's been, over the course of my 30-year career, I've seen a complete change in social attitudes towards marijuana, and to the point where even in Chicago, small amounts of possession of marijuana have been decriminalized, and I do think that's a positive trend. The problem with over-criminalizing conduct such as marijuana possession is that you create a mark on someone's record that makes it difficult for them to move forward as a productive member of society. I think that's the key thing we have here, is that if someone makes a mistake in their life, there needs to be a way for them to make a transition back into a productive way of earning a living and raising a family and having a home. And a conviction, whether it's a misdemeanor conviction or a felony conviction, stays with someone forever, and unless they're lucky enough to obtain some kind of clemency or pardon from the, from the governor. So I think in that sense, we have to be really careful about giving people convictions over things that maybe society doesn't think they deserve a conviction over. And I think marijuana is one area where we've seen such a huge change. You've got whole states that have legalized, legalized the use of marijuana possession and use of marijuana. How do, how do we move forward in the state of Illinois and, and think about our values and create a system that's fair and doesn't harm people in their desire to be good members of society? Now, the other issue is that you have to worry about the Trump administration and Attorney General Sessions, because their attitude towards marijuana is completely different from what I think is the general trend in society. And they have said that they're not going to recognize states that pass marijuana reforms, legal reforms around marijuana. I don't know where that's going to go, I don't know what the trends are going to be in terms, or where the clashes are going to be. And we've, we've seen a lot of clashes between the federal government and some local governments. We're experiencing one right now in the area of immigration. So it's anybody's guess where all this is going to go.
Now, with this election cycle that's happening, we're seeing a lot of people get actively involved in politics and campaigns and volunteering. So as your campaign was getting started, what have you seen first and foremost with the community outreach, when your people are knocking on doors and canvassing? What have you been hearing from voters, and what concerns have they brought to you?
Well, again, you know, as a, as a judicial candidate, I'm running mostly on my experience. I'm also running for the Democratic nomination as an independent, so I think that... So, I think that when I'm knocking on doors, we're telling people, I'm telling people, and people who are knocking on doors for me are telling people that Scott's independent, he's independent-minded. No one's gonna come after me later to remind me that they did a favor for me by slating me or anything like that. And I don't owe anybody money because of some kind of slating process. In some of the race, judicial races, after you've been slated for a judge, the party comes back to you and asks you for a substantial contribution. That's not going on in my campaign, I'm running completely independent. I think that's a value you want on the bench. You want a judge who's gonna see every case completely independently. You want a judge who is an independent person, who's independent-minded. And I think those, that message about my campaign has been resonating in my community.
And running as an independent, have you received any pushback from the Democratic establishment here in Illinois?
No, I haven't gotten any, I wouldn't say pushback, but I would say that the Democratic Party is a very highly structured and organized system. I'm running outside of that system, and so I'm learning a lot about politics, let's put it that way.
All right, yeah, and of course, we've all seen how money in politics is really impacting a lot of these election cycles, and there's always gonna be, of course, a huge voter turn, well, there possibly might be a huge voter turnout, especially as we reach close to the March 20th primary. But I think a lot of people are also wondering, like, what will you do different as a judge? I mean, we know that, of course, being a judicial candidate is gonna be different than a congressional candidate running at the federal level or anyone else, like, running at a state-level office. But I think a lot of people just really wanna know, how are you going to be different than any other previous people running for office?
Well, I think I'm different in a lot of ways from other candidates for judge. First, I have experience that is very broad. I've been practicing law for 30 years in federal and state court. I've been in every courtroom in the county. You know, we're talking not only 26th and California, Daly Center, but Rolling Meadows, Bridgeview, and the others. I've been in downstate counties representing people. I've represented people at the most complicated cases, including death penalty cases. I've had million-dollar, $30 million or more fraud cases, multiple hundreds of jury trials, or I don't even know how many jury trials exactly I've had. I've lost count a long time ago. So in that sense, my experience, I think experience is needed for a judge. The judge needs to have seen a lot of kinds of cases, a lot of different kinds of cases, have had a lot of different clients, to understand when you're making a decision in one particular case, you have the perspective to understand, is this a really serious case, or is this not so serious a case? Does this person deserve compassion, or does this person deserve more punishment? If someone hasn't had that kind of experience, they don't have the frame of reference for making those important decisions. The other thing is I really come out of an Oak Park tradition, which I said before, values diversity, openness, welcoming. I think that makes me different from a lot of candidates who are running. You want a judge with those values, who walks into the courtroom and doesn't see the people in the courtroom as hostile to the judge, but as people who are all fighting with, in good faith, hopefully, to achieve justice. And I've seen justice in the courtroom. When a judge, who I expect is a very harsh judge, deals with a client of mine with compassion in a way that's surprising, the entire courtroom feels it, from the court reporter, the clerks, the judge, people feel that something special has happened, almost a kind of a spiritual moment, an epiphany, we can do justice in the courtroom. We need judges who will walk into the courtroom every day and feel that something special can happen. Something important can happen in the way of justice and fairness, and that the outcome can be felt to be the true outcome, the right outcome, by everyone who's there. And that's the kind of judge I wanna be, I do think that sets me apart.
Now, see, now, we've covered some activism and protesting in Oak Park, and I've noticed there's a lot of community involvement, people get actively involved on progressive policies, and they really get involved at the local level. So, when you're there in the courtroom, let's say from your past previous experiences, what have people said to you who perhaps have never been in Oak Park or never had your experience in Oak Park? Have they ever come up to you and say, well, you shouldn't come in here with this kind of mindset? That's not the kind of mindset a defense attorney should have, a judge should have? Have you ever had to deal with anything like that before?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, like, of course, like, with Oak Park, I mean, Daniel, you could back me up on this, we've seen a couple of things.
So, I think what Kit's getting at is, has this, this, this open-minded, let's find, see if there's anything extra we can do this, really going the extra mile, has that ever led other people to critique you for wanting that level of compassion or being open to that level of compassion? Or has that not been an issue people have addressed?
If they're doing, if they've critiqued me for that, I haven't heard it personally, but it's possible, I suppose, mostly. I've been welcomed by the community, and in my campaigns, I think people recognize me as someone who's exceptionally qualified, who's caring and compassionate. I think I stand outside the typical judicial candidate, and I think, and I hope that when people meet me, my qualities resonate with them, and they say, that's, that guy should be a judge. That's the guy, this is the kind of person I wish we had been putting on the bench all along. You know, someone who really is passionate about these issues, cares and wants to make a difference. Those are the people who should be judged. And sometimes, people with my qualities, they're out there. But it's difficult for them to get recognized through the regular party system. And running as an independent is the only option, and that is unfortunately an uphill battle.
As a defender of justice here in Chicago, the trust between communities and the Chicago Police Department have kind of been on fragile grounds for quite some time. And after the internal investigation of the Chicago Police Department that was released last January, revealed a lot of racial discrimination, lack of accountability, lack of transparency. What is, how will you be able to build that trust with the Chicago Police Department? Making sure that when there is injustice by people that are supposed to serve and protect the communities, what are ways that you can bring those traits of accountability and transparency? And making sure that the right people are judged correctly? And making sure that the people in the communities, that they have their day, their day of justice, I suppose.
I think that's a really good and challenging question. I think it's important, for one thing, for judges to have patience in the courtroom. I know that when I go to work and I'm working in a welcoming environment where I feel trusted, I can communicate my position better. But if I'm in an environment where a set hostility is created, this happens in courtrooms where people are being attacked on both sides, then it's harder to get the message out. I think justice is in the message, it's in the communication. The other thing that I think people have seen is they've come to courtrooms for a long time, and they've seen police officers lie in the courtroom. And I think it's important that whoever lies, whatever witness it is, whether it's a police officer or a civilian witness or whoever it is, you need, the judge needs to pay attention and call people out and make the tough decisions. When people come to court, it is possible for them to feel that they have received justice. The system is an amazing system, I believe in it wholeheartedly. I believe in the courtroom, I believe that special things can happen in the courtroom, that it's a human institution. And when everybody is working together to obtain the correct outcome, it can happen. It doesn't always happen, but it can happen. And I think people who come to court and only see and believe that they're being trounced or stepped on, or their honesty is being disregarded for whatever reason, that leaves them with a bitter-sour feeling when they walk away from that courtroom. That feeling spreads in the community, and it creates hostility between people who are just trying to live their lives and the institutions that they have to interact with all the time, such as the police or the courts or anywhere else. And I think we're, in a way, reaping what we've sowed over these years, where people do feel resentful and untrusting. And, you know, as a judge, how much effect will I have over that? I don't know, I'll just be, I might only just be in traffic court, you know? It depends on if I'm lucky enough to win, where they assign me. But I can tell you that I will come to court every day with this mindset that we need to work hard to make people feel that fairness has happened in the courtroom. And I think that, if people walk away from that and go, I got, I got treated fairly in the courtroom today. I think when they walk away and they spread the word, then change can happen. It's a little bit at a time, but everybody has to have good faith. Everybody has to believe in what they're doing, and that it's possible to be a little bit better. And I really believe that's possible in the courtroom. I've spent 30 years working in the courtroom, fighting for people, you know, and I'm still doing it. It's not an easy job, you lose a lot, quite frankly, in criminal court. But usually, if you fought hard and your clients believe in what you've been doing, and they see that you've been fighting hard for them, whether you win or lose, people feel that justice has been done.
And I think for a lot of people, they feel like there's been a lack of justice for such a long time, that, in fact, if you win your election to be, for the 11th Circuit, I think it's possible, after hearing everything you said and what your character's about, that, you know, you could bring in some reform and some trust back into a system that a lot of people have abandoned. What else will really be needed for people to once again believe in our justice system?
I think it just takes a long time. It takes a mindset that requires a perspective that says, we believe in the evolution and constant improvement of the system. We need to wake up every day and work towards a better system. We need to be the kind of judge that gives people hope that they're getting a fair shake. It's not just the judges, it's the prosecutors, it's the defense attorneys, it's the police officers. All, everybody involved in this system, they go to work at very difficult jobs. They're resented oftentimes by the community, the neighbors, the people who are there, they're trying to help. And yet, you have to, you know, there, it's a challenge, but you can do it, you can stay idealistic and hopeful. If you, if everybody, as many people as possible, had the attitude that they were gonna stay hopeful and work towards the best that this system can offer, I think over time, you will see improvement. And I do wanna be the kind of judge that spends time working on reforms, serving on committees, traveling, addressing people, doing whatever it can take to make people feel that they have a stake in the system and also to improve the system. And I don't know all the opportunities that are available for judges in that respect, but I know there are opportunities for judges to do more than just be in the courtroom, to try to reach out and affect people, to serve on committees, to work with Chief Judge Evans, to make the system a better and fairer system. Those are all things that I wanna do.
And a final question, because our viewers perhaps wanna learn more about your campaign. Where can they find your campaign website and where they can learn more about you on social media?
Sure, first I wanna say thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to talk today.
We're glad to have you here.
And my website is frankelfordjudge.com, and I think it's Frankel for Judge on Facebook as well. And those are the two places where we have information. There's some videos and some more information about me and neighbors, friends, and colleagues who have written letters of support are up there too, supporting my candidacy.
Well, on behalf of everyone here at Harland's Media, Scott Frankel, thank you so much for joining Harland's Media. And we also wanna thank Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chuy Garcia for being on our show. To our viewers and subscribers who are watching us on live or listening to us, we're gonna take a quick break, but we'll be back with some more stories. And once again, thank you all for tuning in, learn more about us on Patreon, see if I can help us out. Peace, everyone, and see you at the second hour. And we are back, welcome to the second hour of Harland's Media. You know, of course, we did things differently today, but today was a very special episode. So now, we're gonna be covering some of the stories that Harland's Media covered, and they're all pretty intense. So first and foremost, let's deal with the Bernie Sanders, Chuy Garcia event that happened at the Apollo 2000 Theater. And let's, let me just say this right off the bat, it was a crowded room, of course, with Senator Bernie Sanders being there, but also Nina Turner, Cook County Assessor-Challenger Fritz Craigie, as well as numerous other groups and individuals that were there. Clearly, we had a, it was, it was an event, a historic event, and I'm gonna say this right off the bat, it cemented, I think, at least Cook County Commissioner Chuy Garcia's run for the fourth Illinois Congressional District. Let's face it, right off the bat, getting endorsed by Senator Bernie Sanders is a pretty big deal. And if we also look at else, of the other people that were there.
It was a very jam-packed evening.
Yes, I'm actually seeing the list right now, there was Oliver and George A. Candares, Representative Teresa Ma, Alderman Carlos Ramirez Rosa, and so many others, it's just crazy. It was, it was a fantastic historic event.
And the livestream that we put up has kinda gone gangbusters, Our Revolution.
The National Chapter of Our Revolution, yeah.
But to always want to outdo ourselves, we have a HD full version. When we started livestream, we just had issues in that entire, but if you saw that livestream, you know exactly what we were talking about. This was just, the further in it got, the more people pulled out their phones, the more people sort of livestreaming, the less bandwidth was available. However, we did do a camera record, so we have the entire thing from start to finish, which includes people that were missed in the livestream, as well as it being good quality with much better sound. So, that's always open for anyone that wants to check that out.
And please share it, you can find it on the Harland's Media YouTube channel, we also have a post.
And our Facebook page as well.
And our Facebook page, yes, so please share.
Took forever to upload.
But I will say this, setting up, I think, like, what a lot of people don't know, behind the scenes, is that we got there very early. We were there, like, what, around 12:30, 12:45?
At least I got there one, you got there probably a little earlier.
No, you got there at 12:50, 12:45, I know you got there, cuz we, cuz at 1, I remember sending a text message inside saying, hey, can we at least come?
We got there so early, 10% is not enough for me to care about.
Okay, well, no matter what, no matter what. But the thing is, is that when we got in there, one of our key things we wanted to do was get quality sound. And so, myself and Daniel were really trying to work alongside with the audio crew to really get something done.
The event, so, from behind the scenes, this is, I guess we can do this, it's a good behind-the-scenes story too. So, it seemed, the event seemed a bit rushed in this, in the sense that they didn't have, they hadn't thought out, hey, we want the media at this part of the venue, but we don't have power for them, and we don't have an audio splitter for them.
Well, there was a power, but power was in back of us, the main outlet over there in front was.
But my point is that if that was, that should have, in a perfect scenario where everything was planned out to the detail, that should have been set up. It was, we had a few other news channels that were bit, it was, I thought it was a bit much, they were complaining like, oh, this should have been already done by the time we got here, we should have had the red carpet rolled out for us. Because we're the news, we take pictures.
Sorry you guys captured someone from NBC.
That was much later, and I'll talk about that much later.
And it turns out, she's the one that wrote that Sanders was gonna be endorsing.
Oh, yes, she was the one who was gonna say that Sanders was going to endorse one of the governor candidates.
She's the reason I thought Sanders was gonna endorse someone.
Yeah, we actually did two livestreams. First livestream we did, we thought the event was gonna start at 2:00 PM, but it was gonna start at really 4:00, when at least when Chuy Garcia and Senator Bernie Sanders were gonna be on the show. But we initially thought from some of our sources that Bernie Sanders was going to weigh in to the gubernatorial election here in Illinois. As we all know, it's a tight race between Illinois State Senator Daniel Biss, J.B. Pritzker, and Chris Kennedy.
And as far as factors go, Chuy Garcia is backing Kennedy, but Our Revolution is backing Biss. So, it's a very strong hot potato, if Sanders wanted to even touch either of them, because he would very much aggravate, to a very, very strong degree, one group or the other.
Yeah, and just to note, Bernie Sanders really, he's not involved with Our Revolution or the subsequent chapters that are part of Our Revolution. So, I think it was, he actually made a statement to where he said he is not going to weigh in onto the Ohio or Illinois governor elections, he's gonna let them play out as they play out.
I think that's the right move.
Yeah, it is a smart move, because let's face it, you know, there's a lot of support for J.B. Pritzker, Chris Kennedy, and Senator Daniel Biss, and, you know, that's, it's, it's a hot topic.
And on some degree, he's making, he's deciding not to decide between Kennedy and Biss versus something like J.B.
Well, no, I don't think he was going to endorse J.B. Pritzker.
Yeah, well, that's true too.
That's not gonna happen, I mean.
At this point, we need more unity than, you know, the wall between Kennedy and Biss. So, if, as long as we just have more people voting towards more progressive candidates, as opposed to the establishment candidate, I think that's a smart move on Bernie's part.
But it is interesting to note that Chris Kennedy, as well as Lieutenant Governor candidate, both came to the event, even though, I guess they maybe probably thought they were gonna be on the stage, but apparently, a lot of people were telling him, do not come onto the stage at all.
Yeah, we were talking behind the scenes. Yeah, we were talking behind the scenes to some of the organizers, one of which was uh saying that if Chris Kennedy came to try and get on stage, he would stop him. And if Daniel Biss came to try and get on stage, he would stop them, but they were welcome to the event.
Right.
What was very annoying was uh going back to uh what's her name, the reporter that walked in front of our camera? What's her name again?
I don't have, I I don't remember it. All I know is that I was interviewing uh one of the uh Aaron Ortiz. Uh, he's running for an Illinois State Senate seat, uh District One, I believe. And yeah, I was asking, I was gonna ask him originally, uh, the first question I was asking him was about um money in politics and how it's been affecting uh, you know, a lot of the local uh state elections. And then right off the bat, somebody walked into the in front of the camera.
How do you pronounce her? Mary Ann?
Mary Ann Aram, yeah, of NBC Chicago, yes.
She, so it's interesting. So she's the one that walks in for our camera. And again, she's a reporter. Again, it was, I put in, I wrote a post on it on my personal page. It was an honor that we were the first people to ever get her to walk in front of a camera that she shouldn't have walked in front of.
I'm assuming it was an accident, though.
It was.
I'm not, I'm not confident at all that it was. It seemed, again, first, okay. If if you are, okay, think of it this way. If you are someone who's on the news first, your entire job is to know where a camera is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just your eye picks up, you know when a camera's on. It's literally, it's built into your psyche. She's been doing this for two decades. Second, she literally walked through and as she's walking through, as she's walking through, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, as she's walking through, and if you look at this picture, she's looking right at the camera when she did it because she sees a camera because she's trained to see a camera.
We're on their radar now. Yes.
Yeah, that's why I tagged her on that.
But all I know is I was, I was, I was upset. I I was.
I, well, who was it? Phil actually was said it. Oh, no, it wasn't Phil, it was Justin, jealousy.
We're on you. We're on to you.
And then and then afterwards, when she did her report on the on the event, she made it sound like Kennedy and Biss were both invited to the event and Biss turned the invitation down.
That's not what happened.
But that's what she said.
That's not what happened.
I said that, I said that too. I said, um, someone else was posting on it and I didn't know that, I didn't didn't care to ever look at her report, but then someone's like, well, I was in um, that uh that shot, so I watched all the way to the end. And she's like, Kennedy, like Kennedy was here, Daniel Biss did not attend or something like that.
No, no, no.
Like Kennedy wasn't supposed to be there.
Everyone made it specifically clear that none of the candidates were gonna be on debate stage. They were invited to be there and sit in the background, but not one of them would turn it down. And I think out of respect, Daniel Biss respected what the main organizer, remember, remember, this was a, this was Chui Garcia, look, Cook County Commissioner Chui Garcia, that was his event and his event alone, okay? And it was for his campaign rally, remember? Uh, uh, Cook County Commissioner Garcia was one of uh Bernie Sanders delegates in Philadelphia during the twenty sixteen Democratic uh convention. So uh, right off the bat, of course, Senator Bernie Sanders is going to go there and support somebody who supported him during his presidential election cycle. I mean, come on, it's and that's and of course, there were some members of our revolution there, but it was quite clear that none of the governor candidates were gonna be on the debate stage.
It's a Chui Garcia event with him and people he's supporting to continue running.
Right.
And so that's that's kinda what I, the the correct way she would have, should have ended it at if she wanted to say it correctly. Maybe she didn't know, maybe let's, maybe we'll give her the benefit of the doubt. She just wasn't as good at knowing what happened in this situation.
She's very crowded.
And we, yeah, maybe.
Let's give every.
Yeah, let's just give her the benefit of the doubt and say she just didn't know what was going on. She didn't know the ins and outs of the situation. She hadn't done her due to her due, she wasn't reading, whoever had written her script hadn't given her the, whatever it may be. Um, the correct way that that should have been done was Daniel Biss, uh, both uh both candidates were uh were not were not included in this event because it might have been caused bad circumstantial, something or other to happen. But Chris Kennedy decided he wanted to show up nonetheless, while Daniel Biss decided to uh not, I mean, that's there's, if you're gonna say that, that really irked me that she made it sound like.
Yeah.
So basically, remember, now she's, because I didn't realize until after that she's three different people. She's the person that that walked in front of an interview with someone because she just, she, the reason she did it was, I think, this is my speculation based on being there, thinking about it and all this other stuff, she just wanted to talk to someone and this was the then through an interview was the quickest path to do it. And it's not a big station, so who cares? Uh, second, she's the one that was posting out that Sanders was gonna endorse someone. And I feel bad because I fell for that.
Yeah, we we both did. And we 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 kinda got some heat from some people who said, are you sure that's gonna happen? Because I don't think that's gonna happen.
And then, and yeah, so yeah, no, uh, fool me once. And then, but again, I I can't, again, if anyone wants to go to my personal Facebook page and you know where that is and you're a friend, actually, it is public, so you can see it. You get you get to see this and you can tell me whether she saw a camera or not.
Yeah, you can also see if I'm annoyed because that never happened before.
I think you guys deserve a formal apology.
I think I, you know what? I agree.
I agree too. But also for for all our viewers and listeners who are watching us or hearing us, uh, we did manage.
Thinking about us.
Yeah, we did manage to interview uh three of the uh new candidates that uh Chui Garcia himself has endorsed, so please check out those interviews.
Yeah, we had a lot of very good.
We also managed to get a quick two-minute uh statement from Chris Kennedy. Uh, I asked him if he was expecting any kind of endorsement from Senator Bernie Sanders and he he rightfully said, no, I wasn't expecting any kind of endorsement at all, but it's it's very, it's, you know, it's very good. At least we managed to get his statement on that. And we also managed to speak to Troy LaRavire.
LaRavier.
LaRavier, oops.
Don't worry, you only interviewed him a few times.
All right, ha, ha, ha. Um, but yes, we spoke to him and we also spoke to.
I gotta say, I gotta take a break as I know I'm gonna break the fourth wall a little bit, but I kinda like that we're more relaxed on the second hour.
Yeah, I do.
Like this format.
I do, I like it too, but.
Maybe we can just like do the taping and just have the guest wait for an hour. Just go get coffee or something.
Oh, yeah, ha, ha. I don't think that's gonna happen. A lot of people are gonna.
Or what if we did it before the show?
Possibly.
Ooh.
Possibly, maybe.
Ooh.
Saying just saying.
Possibly. Um, and.
See, see, that's actually a great idea.
And we also interviewed um uh Illinois Attorney General Candidate, who was also on our show, Aaron Goldstein. So please check out all those uh videos around our Facebook page, Twitter account and uh YouTube channel. So yeah, it was, it was a historic event. I definitely learned, uh, I was, I was glad to see Senator Bernie Sanders here in Chicago. I don't think he's gonna be coming back until probably maybe what, the November election?
Till we ask him.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Maybe. But uh, of course, as we all know, the March twentieth primaries are gonna be happening here in Illinois. So perhaps maybe the next time he comes here will be.
Here's some of the other people you can go through in our list, uh, starting with Troy. So Troy's interview was really nice. It kind of turned into a conversation. I liked it about what it means to be an active citizen and what it means to vote and the importance of doing that. I think he is a very nice, broad, encompassing type interview. And the first half of the was was very much about his run. He's running for mayor. Um, that could be uh, he, I I don't know, we haven't seen it planned out yet, but I could see him winning. Um, very much so. Who else do we have?
Uh, we also interviewed judicial candidate Beatrice uh Sandoval. We interviewed uh Aaron Ortiz for uh, correction, uh, for state rep. He's running on for the first district. And finally, we also interviewed Alma Anya for Cook County Commissioner. And we also, once again, interviewed Aaron Goldstein. So check out those interviews. It was a a really packed event. We're lucky we got those interviews when we did. We had some help from individuals who were running that event so they could organize those people so they could be on our show. And we were really glad to speak to all of them. So now we do have to segue into uh another uh event that we covered. And it, there was a livestream forum that we held, and in fact, today is March third. So guess what? The Illinois Libertarian Party is gonna pick uh who their lieutenant governor candidate's gonna be, as well as who their governor candidate's gonna be. So essentially, we were hosting this uh forum. It was kinda done at the last minute. And it was here at Q Four Radio at the main stage area in the back. So uh, check out that livestream on our Facebook page. We also, once again, have a high-definition version that's also on our YouTube channel. So look, we've covered the Democratic primary uh with, you know, a lot of detail. We always weigh in our thoughts on the candidates. And uh, you know, who was the stronger of the candidates? You know, we always say, well, Chris Kennedy did this, JP Pritzker answered this question pretty well. Daniel, Senator Daniel Biss answered this pretty well. And of course, we also, we 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 weigh in on uh who was the strong candidate and who potentially has the best chance to really make an impact for the political party. And so we're gonna do the same thing with the Illinois Libertarian Party. So uh, first and foremost, let's start off with Lieutenant uh Governor's portion of the debate. It was between Sand and David Earl. Uh, so basically, uh, it it was, it was a much shorter version of the debate, but I'm going to say um from how I've seen the two individuals answer them, answer the questions, um, David Earl, uh, Williams the third, uh, basically, I think would turn out to be the much more stronger candidate.
So what were some of the topics or questions that were asked for the candidates?
Well, of course, one, why, why not?
Actually, before we go into that, can I just set up the format? So we did this, this was a co-moderated event. So this was Hardland's Media was moderating, but also Jenny from the Libertarian Party was.
Jenny Floyd.
Jenny Floyd, she was there to, you know, we wanted to make sure with libertarians, when they're doing their thing, they had someone that was represented their direct interests that was their opposite kit. We thought that was very important to balance out uh, the questions and how, what what type of questions were asked. So that's part of it, but.
But some of the questions that we asked, I've basically given detail, uh, which one of the gov gubernatorial candidates um was the stronger of the candidates to uh lead the, lead the party? Um, the office of Lieutenant Governor and its relevance here in Illinois, cuz as we all know, at one point, uh, Lieutenant Governor was President of the Illinois State Senate. But since nineteen seventy, that's no longer been the case. So it's it really doesn't have the power impact that it once had. It's no longer that tie-breaking vote. It's only in charge of certain bureaucratic offices. And uh, finally, we also asked, uh, you know, wh- where they see the party going down the road, especially in in future election cycles, and what can they potentially offer?
And I remember specifically the one question you asked to both of them, which was um something like, which of the candidates do you like?
Yeah, I asked him which I asked, which which the governor candidate.
They gave some of the most different style answers, maybe not in 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 what they say at the end, but the style of it.
Right.
Whereas um, what's it's um David and what's the other guy's name?
Uh, Sand.
Sand. His was basically, well, I like each of them for different reasons and I would be happy to work with any of them, whereas David's was, that's a dumb question. I'm gonna go with whoever wins.
Of course. Well, I mean, look, right off the bat, I mean, uh, eventually, when, once the libertarians pick who their who their nominee's gonna be, of course, as I shouted out, they're gonna have to work together. And so they have to go forward.
Yeah, so the way the Libertarian Party works, it's a little different is instead of the governor candidate winning and they pick a running mate, it's the Libertarian Party, there's a people, number of people that will run to be the governor candidate, and there's a number of people that will run to be the lieutenant governor candidate. And the Libertarian Party will pick who they like for lieutenant governor, and then they'll pick who they like for governor.
Right. And Daniel, who do you think was the stronger candidate for lieutenant governor debate?
Well, I think that there's a few things to be factored in, but I think if it's, if the entire Libertarian Party choice of uh lieutenant governor was determined solely by that event, I think, like, I think I would go with what you said and say David Earl Williams the third.
Yeah.
Got it.
I think, yeah, it he was a little bit more prepared and plus, you know, he's been campaigning for a very long time, at least. I thi- I think the last time when we had him on our show was sometime in May and he was, he was campaigning since that time or even before then.
Yeah, and uh.
I think it was, he was on episode three.
Yeah, he was an early, he was an early guest, but I think on top of that, he has that um, that outgoing voice that you have for speakers need to have, where they're, where they speak with uh this passion and conviction.
Yeah.
And uh, Sand was much more mild-mannered.
Yeah.
So I, that's what, that's I'm saying, you know, it's great to have these forums, it's great to have debates, but it's, it's, it's judging certain aspects of a candidate that uh, aren't the whole picture. So being able to speak in public, fantastic if you're in politics. True, being able to think of answers on your feet, having answers and ideas of what you wanna do and be, be have them prepared, that's great.
Yeah.
Um, but there's more to it than that.
There is. And plus, let's also add in for the governor's portion as well. That one was a little bit more livelier and was really more intense. Now, as we all uh know, in case some of our viewers who may not notice, the three individuals that are trying to get the uh, get the governor nomination is Matthew Scarborough, uh, Jon Stewart, no relation to the Jon Stewart comedian.
He's at a, he's at Animal Sanctuary as we speak.
And Cash Jackson. So uh, these three.
With a K.
Yes. And so these three individuals are trying to get the lieutenant, uh, not, sorry about that, get the governor's uh nomination from the Illinois Libertarian Party. And each one of these individuals um really brings in something unique to the table. Uh, Jon Stewart, this was his second or I believe third time running uh for, it was the Illinois Libertarian Party.
I don't think it's his third, I think it's his third time running. I think it's his first time with the Libertarian Party.
Yeah, and he did say that this will be his last time running for any kind of, you know, governor office seat or anything similar to that. Uh, Cash Jackson, he's a former veteran, uh, serves uh about twenty years in the Navy. And then there's Matthew Scarborough, who's been with the Illinois Libertarian Party for quite some time too.
It's a very, almost a very video game style choice where there's no, if you look at kind of like this broad spectrum of traits, no one really has the advantage in terms of, and and I'm in, and in just this context that Scar, like I said, he's, he, I think it's fair to say that he would be the most true ideologically libertarian, because again, he's been with the party for a very long time. He speaks the wording that the party would promote. Uh, where uh Jon Stewart has the more of the ability to fund the campaign. He is the media apparatus. He has the ability to, he has the highest ability to win in a sense.
Yeah.
Um, then you have Cash Jackson, who's kind of this uh, balance of he's more even-headed. He's um again, it's like what I'm trying to say is each of them have their own perks. It's not like they overlap. It's a very true choice. It's not a well, I could have this guy who has fifty percent this trait or this and forty percent this trait, or this guy who has forty percent that trait and fifty percent this trait.
Yeah.
It's a interesting uh race.
Yeah, it was, and it was, it was a very intense debate, especially between all three of them.
Oh, man, yeah, if you, if there's um, yeah, if there's one thing you see that we did this week, it's um, check out the um about the, yeah, ma- basically watch the governor's portion of the Libertarian debate. It's just, it's fun to watch.
It it's fun to watch and plus you hear about each of the different policies. Uh, I tell you one thing, that was, it was a difficult moder, yeah, I I I hope I did a very good job like moderating that the whole thing, cuz it was, it was tough to do cuz you had to deal with these three different individuals who probably got tired of talking over each other for such a very long time.
Or they got tired of the other people talking.
Yes, of course. So uh, right off the bat, we do have to address like one, who was the stronger of, at least from that debate, if this is the first time watching it or, you know, not really knowing anything about these three candidates. I'm gonna weigh in and say that uh at this point in time, right now, Cash Jackson did seem like the stronger of the candidates.
So in terms of the chat, I think the chat very much claimed him. I think he might have gotten more props in chat than either of the other two combined. However, um, I think that if you're someone that subscribes to the way to look at the world that um Scarborough has, I think that you'd think he won. I think that if you're, I mean, I think each of them had very distinct groups that think they won. I think the real question is which has the bigger group.
Yeah.
And I think, I think it is Cash.
I think it has to be Cash Jackson.
I'm not.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll find out what they, cuz I mean, they're gonna have to vote.
This is just for this debate.
When are they announcing it?
Today.
Today, today's the day they announce.
I mean, like, have they just at any point today?
Oh, no, a week from today.
Oh, a week from today?
I just got, I just got, I just got news, it's a a week from today.
That's a week from today and they'll, they'll make their announcement. Okay, well, that was a little interesting.
So next week, we'll let everyone know what happens. We'll see if the other picks.
We should definitely plan more debates, even if it's just between like two candidates or something for the same district. And make sure it's on a day that I can go.
Yeah.
Well, well, we we will try our best.
I would love to be a moderator. That would be a lot of fun.
It's, it's a lot of fun. This wasn't my first rodeo, but uh, I'm looking forward to doing future uh forums in in the next couple of months, if we ever have that opportunity to do so.
Yeah, this was, this was a lot of fun to do.
But I think now we need to go on to a more serious topic. And Daniel, you covered this event that actually happened in your own backyard of Oak Park, Illinois.
Yeah, speaking of Oak Park, if you've listened to the show all day, I think you get a free sandwich. We've mentioned Oak Park so much.
Oh, we should do something like that, dude.
We do, yeah, no, once we have the money to afford sandwiches to give to people.
Uh, support us on Patreon.
Yeah, if you support us on Patreon, we'll give you a sandwich in return if you give us enough on Patreon. There you go, happy. Okay, um, so in Oak Park, as a lot of people have seen, a lot of all over the country, students have uh walked out uh to protest the school shooting that happened in Florida. I know when we talked about it last time, um, I am still a person that's very cynical that anything is gonna change with the gun debate until twenty twenty at least. But there have been a number of developments since then that have made me not still make the same choice, but I'm not as confident in that choice, which I'm happy. This is a thing that I wanna be as unconfident about as possible, that I wanna see change. Now, what happened was in Oak Park, there was a walkout that happened at twelve. Now, what happened was in Oak Park, there was a walkout that happened at twelve. And, uh, I just happened to, you know, cause I don't live in Oak Park anymore. I live in the town next to it, but it's very close. It was easy driving distance. So I went over and, uh, covered it and I got to see everyone do, walk out and do this big lap. Um, they walked from the school to Ridgeland, I believe. They walked up Ridgeland. If you know Oak Park, you know exactly where I'm talking about. If you don't, just Google it. If you go from, uh, Ridgeland to Lake, Lake to. East and they turn back into the school, it was a, it was a nice march. And it seemed like a lot of people that were there were really, were there for it. One thing I did notice at the very beginning before I started filming is whenever they came out. There were a handful of students that just decided, okay, this is the perfect time to ditch school as you'd expect in a high school. But I know from events when I went to a PRF, which is the same school, that the, uh, the rate of loss was five, ten percent of the students. This case was just six people. See, that's what I'm trying to say is that people, the fact that it was so few people means that people really do care about this. Because otherwise more people have just taken the advantage of the situation and left. So I got to interview two individuals. Um, one, um, you could see this on the, the page as well, is a very. I was asking questions just because I wanted to get a sense of how much are these guys aware of the situation? How much is. That they're reacting to what's happening? How much of it is they understand what's happening or are using that to do something? And when I got away with, from the interview was they really understand what's happening. They understand the issues that are happening. What they can do about it and the importance of them being the ones to act. That was a very strong interview. Uh. Again, it was one of my, I think it's my third interview I've actually done on the channel, third or fourth.
Hold on, wait, hold on. I actually right now doing a countdown in my head. You got one, two. I think that's number four.
Yeah, so there you go with my.
There we go, boom.
Second most experienced on the channel, next to Kit with a hundred times as many.
It's not easy.
Yeah, oh, no, exactly. Uh, but, uh, it was very. It's good to see people involved. It's good especially for younger kids to understand the value of this kind of work.
Impassionate too.
Yes.
I think we always hear, you know, from, I even mentioned when I, I spoke to like maybe young people who are running for office or part of a grassroots movement and they're making. You know, a lot of impact, uh, to their political environment. I always ask them like, you know, we always hear corporate media say that young people don't care about the local issues. They don't, uh, know about the stuff that's really affecting them. And, and see the thing is, corporate media needs to realize that that whole notion, people, we have access to the internet. People talk. People are not, you know, young people are not stupid. Don't treat them, cause, cause they said the same thing to me when I was a kid.
Ridiculous argument, cause clearly, no, I mean, like, so these kids are too young to talk about gun control, but they're not.
No, no, they're getting paid by George Soros.
But they're not too young to be able to hold a gun. I mean, like three year olds walking around.
Now you get it.
You know what I mean? It's, it's, it's the most ridiculous argument.
But, you know, it's, it was good to see those kids, you know, stand up and, you know, stand in solidarity with the children in Florida.
Not just that, it's that, but I wanted to try and get out of the interview. Watch the interview, you'll see if I did a good job of this or like. Kit said the question much better than I asked it. I think I said like, there are some people who think kids can, I, I, whatever. I, uh, the, again, the point that I wanted to get out of this was one thing that they mentioned twice was. That they wanna make sure that they're, like, th- this is what I love. It's not just, we don't want gun violence. We don't want gun violence. We don't want gun violence. It's with the kids, and this is true across all the walkouts that I've seen coverage of. It's, we are gonna walk out. Because there is an unsafe situation that we are being put in. And the core of that issue is political motivated corruption. Of, um, various groups who are making money, the NRA being, uh, of course, the lobby group. And our counter to that is to fight that corruption by voting.
There was also, um.
That's more than social media, not, not, sorry, social media. It's more than corporate media or corporate actors or people that are professionals, we'll even say.
Yeah. There was also, um, I believe a public defender in Texas that said that he would work pro bono for any student. That was facing, um, suspension, uh, from their school, cause that was also a threat, um, amongst many Texan. Schools for any student that walked out. And, uh, to me, you know, that's threatening your freedom of speech and this is something. You know, that does affect all of us or quite possibly will at any point. So it's at least nice to see, um, some people defending the law. You know, to say like, you know what? I will work for you for free if anyone does try to, um, pretty much violate your freedom.
It's great. Texas, buy a gun as young as you want. You can't have it. Remember that when they were doing the dildo protests like a year ago? That you can't, you're allowed to have a gun on campus, but you're not allowed to have a dildo so that everyone just attached a dildo to their backpack.
Oh.
And they were, and they were, and they were punished, but the people that had guns attached to their bags were fine. It was, it was to make that point. And so now Texas is saying, it's fine if you wanna buy a gun, but we're gonna punish you if you wanna talk about it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so.
Well, it's a way to, to scare people into submission.
Once again, keep people silent, so there we go.
But that, that, and remember, that worked until the internet when they had alternate forms of communication.
Right.
So, good job, guys. You're obsolete. You know what? Do you know how dumb this is? This is like building a wall along the Mexican border that a trebuchet from the fourteenth century could take out.
Yeah.
Even if Cards Against Humanity built it, which they have.
Yeah.
Which they promised they're not gonna use, but they could, but they won't, but they could.
Or in Florida, what was it? Within the last week in Florida, they, uh. Like in front of a bunch of the Parkland survivors, um, decided to vote down on a bill that would make it more difficult to.
And guess what they supported and voted for instead?
That pornography was.
See it back to the dildos. It's all connected.
A public threat. And it was in the same session that they voted for that, but against gun control.
Go figure. It's, uh, once again, priorities from our elected officials who are bought off by the NRA, all thanks to our good, uh, you know. Court rulings, uh, Supreme Court rulings, Citizens United and the McCutcheon's decision because money is speech, corporations are people. And our elected officials can be bought and sold. And the NRA sure likes to weigh in.
Corporations, corporations are people, money is speech and you can eat dirt.
Do you guys see that, uh, CNN event? Um, I think Jake Tapper was hosting it, but a lot of the, uh, survivors. Uh, Parkland survivors were confronting members of the NRA and Marco Rubio and, and asking some pretty hard questions and.
Harder than any CNN journalist would ever there.
Yeah.
Well, no, I, I'm not even gonna give like that much credit to like CNN, like yes, thank you for having this event. But it was the students, you know, that were just very direct, very clear in what they were asking. And pretty much holding these people's feet to the fire. Like you've, you've gotten, you know, X amount from the NRA. What are you actually going to do about it?
So what I mean by is, um, okay, I'll ask it this way. Who would you rather have holding senators, congressmen, members of power? Feet to the fire? CNN news anchors or those kids? I'm gonna say those kids.
I'd rather have those kids because they know more about the hour and what's affecting them right now than CNN ever would. Cause remember.
They're the youth of the movement.
And I also.
Remember, CNN has always done, especially, e- even if we look past the gun control debate, it was climate change or any other issue. We call things fifty fifty. It's, uh, did we have this side or we have this side? So, I mean, that's just how things are, you know? But and tha- and that's how CNN just, just always says that, well, this group says one thing, this group says another thing and that's.
Coke says they're the best, Pepsi says that they're the best. Who are we to decide? You choose.
I think our youth is proving every day that we are not as uninformed as, uh, some of our older. Uh, members of society are claiming us to be.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're one of the most informed generations that have, that have been around. And we're also one of the most passionate. The passion that I see in a lot of young people. Um, it's absolutely incredible. And, you know, they're going to be the ones steering this entire movement. And, um, really connecting, you know, across, whether it's across party lines, across. Um, just intersectionality at its finest. And it's going to evolve into something even more powerful. And, I mean, we're even seeing, um, this being reflected in Springfield as well. Where we had Senate Bill sixteen fifty seven that was, um, brought back for the House to vote on. It was passed in the Senate. Last year, um, and it has many, uh, about twenty, um. About twenty, uh, Senate sponsors, about thirty-five, uh, House rep sponsors. Will Gesardi, one of our previous. Uh, guests, he, he is one of the, uh, House sponsors. Biss, um, is also a sponsor of it. And, uh, it was led by Senator Don Hammond. Uh, sorry, Harmon. And essentially it's, um, it requires gun dealers to be licensed. And, uh, it's, it's called the Gun Dealer Licensing Act. And it's intended to hold corrupt gun dealers accountable. And curb the illegal trafficking of firearms into communities. So, check it out, um, yeah.
And, uh, we're, as we, you know, of course sadly, time goes by pretty fast. Uh, we're gonna have to wrap up this episode of Hardlands Media. Uh, we wanna thank everyone for tuning in, listening to us, watching us on our live stream. Wanna thank one of our Patreon supporters for being in our audience. Myra, shout out to you. We wanna thank, uh, Cook County Commissioner Jesus Chewie Garcia for being on our show, as well as, uh, Scott Frankel for being on our show as well. Uh, all the best to them on their respective campaigns. And to all our viewers and subscribers, if you like what we do, please check out the Hardlands Media Patreon page. Your support allows us to build more content, to do this show and so many other projects that we're working on. Peace to all of you and let's all do what we can to build a better future.